That's why so much of our focus is on improving the effectiveness of that instruction and the engagement level in those tier one environments. But in those intervention settings, we are providing a much smaller teacher to student ratio, individualized, skill-based support, and specific supports for students with characteristics of dyslexia. And as I'm mentioning dyslexia, I want to flag that this is Dyslexia Awareness Month. And staff, especially Ms. Emily Vuelso, has been working to highlight this across the district. And next week, prior to the board meeting, there will be a dyslexia simulation station outside of the board meeting. So I would encourage you to stop by that and to experience that for yourselves. In terms of tutoring or learning acceleration, this can support skill or standard-based needs, both before, during, and after school. And the emphasis here is on accelerating learning, both supporting current and future instruction versus a more deficit mindset where we're trying to fill things that they might have missed along the way, to sort of keep them on pace and to keep them on track, again, with what's happening in that tier one environment. And so as we kind of come to a close here before I ask for questions, I wanted to share some about the professional learning and support, and then some of the resources that have been produced. So, so far this year, we've had what we've called back to the basics sessions, both with teachers and leaders, every teacher and leader in the district, which was a great opportunity to sort of level set across all of our staff. We've had virtual office hours support where staff could call in and ask questions about new things they've been asked to do. Curriculum-based support, so there's a virtual professional development series that folks can attend. There was actually one this afternoon for our K-5 teachers. Our school-based instructional coaches who've been deployed at the school level to support the implementation of these high-impact strategies in our district's adopted curriculum. And then finally, our specialized education assistants who are providing very focused support in K-2 classrooms and in third through fifth grade tutoring. And as I shared with some of our new board members at their orientation session, we've actually implemented a new time tracking system to ensure that our SEAs' time is being used in the way that was intended, and we're being very successful in keeping a closer eye on that, so that we can then intervene at a campus level if we see that they're being pulled to do things that don't align with their original job description and the way that was envisioned. And so we feel good about what we're seeing there so far. And then lastly, is doing something that, you know, we should do but don't often do, and that's let parents know how they can support and specific things they can do at home in order to support their students' literacy attainment. And so there's a literacy toolkit that's been developed, that's being shared with parents, and I believe you have copies of one specific resource that the team developed, our reading topic calendars, that shows parents, kind of by grade level, what their student is going to be reading at certain times in the year, in case they want to support that reading at home. Because to go back to what I shared about building knowledge in the baseball study, it's very important, and it accelerates students' learning if they read on the same topic multiple times. Actually, research would say you can accelerate your vocabulary growth by as much as four times if you read multiple texts on the same topic, because you're going to encounter vocabulary that are similar, and you're going to increase your familiarity with those words at a faster rate by reading on the same topic over and over, over a period of time. So just by providing something like this reading topic calendar, parents can see, oh, we're reading about this topic at school during this month or these few weeks. I can support that at home just by Googling a related text and handing the phone to my child, or checking out a book from the library, or printing off something from the internet. So it's just a very kind of common sense resource to give parents an idea of what they can read about, and then also some of the questions they could ask to sort of probe and have a discussion with their child with their, about what they've read. And then lastly, is thinking about how we're aligning our supports with community partners. So we get a lot of offers for support. We have a ton of great partners that we're very thankful to have, but we want to ensure that there's aligned support, so that they're working in the same direction that we are in aligning the resources that are offered, and that we're not heading off into 10 different directions with the resources that are being put in place. And so that's something that we've been excited to engage in conversations with, with our strategic partners for literacy, and to continue to plan with that group as we think about, you know, the months and years ahead as this plan continues to take shape. So that's kind of the end of what I have for you. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, but I'll stop talking now.
Board Member McKissick.
Thank you, Dr. Miracle, for that very thorough report. I'm really excited about this renewed level on literacy we've been talking. Very concrete, tangible approaches to how do we go about tackling and improving literacy rates here? I was just reading an article in The Washington Post the other day, and it was talking about how, no matter how successful a student is, when they go up to college, for example, they don't really know how to read like an entire book, because they're so focused on reading just excerpts, and because that's what our testing. How do we go about, you know, bridging that gap of tangible books in the hands, even our littlest ones, and certainly our high school-level students?
It's a great question, and something that Superintendent has challenged us to think about as well. And one is making sure that we have materials that they're interested in reading to begin with. And so we're in the process of taking inventory of like the most frequently checked-out books from our libraries, to ensure that we can kind of increase the number of those reading materials. And so that'll be something that we continue to think about. But I would go back and say, one is making sure that they have successful experiences with reading, and it's not something that they kind of immediately want to shy away from. So it really does start at that earliest level, ensuring that students have success with what they read, but then also are able to encounter topics of interest. Because at the end of the day, we just want students to be reading as much as possible, and not necessarily gatekeeping certain books, because they aren't academic or don't align with the topics that we think they should be reading. So we're definitely thinking in that direction.
Vice Chair Love, Commissioner McKinney, Commissioner Murphy.
This is good stuff. A couple of key points in there. My speech therapist illustrates with me, so I know it's working. You've seen the... Can you comment on that? Let's just say a family of five, never been outside Memphis, and they have been to the same school, and when they graduate, they can't read. A Spanish-speaking family migrates to Memphis, and they can read fluently in Spanish and English. Speak to that.
I'd be happy to. So I think one misconception that we have about our English language-learning students is that they struggle with language, but in fact, they're often some of the most gifted students that we have when it comes to language, because they've already mastered one, and now they're picking up a second. So they're experiencing a second language, and so that often kind of shows that skillset that they have. I'll just go back to a kind of general statement. Every child can learn to read, given the right supports. I think the district, and my analysis of kind of past approaches, has not implemented a consistent enough approach that's been given enough time to work, and given enough support to staff that are actually responsible for deploying that plan. And so it's incumbent on us to make the plan very clear, which we're trying to do, provide supports, which we're trying to do, but stick with it long enough so that it actually has a chance to work. Because I think that's another Achilles' heel in education. We try something for a few months or a year, we don't like it, and we change, and we change, and we change, and we change. And so I think the consistency of the approach is the most important thing.
What are you doing different now?
I would say the implementation of our tier-one materials. So last year and in years prior, the district, in my professional opinion, was attempting to teach reading in a way that doesn't necessarily align with what the science of reading says, by focusing too much on a sequential approach to teaching the standards. The standards are important, but the standards are not the key to unlocking the literacy abilities of our students. It's teaching them foundational skills, which certainly are part of the standards, but it's in building that knowledge consistently. And so the district would, you know, spend a week in the materials, and then a week sort of really pursuing a specific standard, and then hop back into the materials, and then go after another standard. And this was kind of motivated, I think, by wanting to increase proficiency rates. And so there was certainly a strategy there, but I don't think that it aligns as closely to the science of reading as just implementing our tier-one ELA adopted materials as effectively as possible, and again, shifting as much of that work into the hands of students as possible. So I would say that focus on our adopted materials is the biggest difference in what was happening last year versus what is happening this year.
Thank you. This is a great report. Thank you. And I'm excited about the plan. I do want to say that I'm really excited about the high-impact strategy of aligning the curriculum and making sure everyone is focused on following that curriculum with fidelity. So thank you for the supports that you're doing around that. That's great. I do want to... Board Member McKissick said something very interesting about our students aren't reading books. And then you said something which made me think about your story about the baseball, about experience, I think you said experience and background knowledge, and how well that particular person who was really into it could perform better in terms of literacy. So then that gets me to thinking about access to books that the students actually want to read and are interested in, topics that they're interested in. So is there a way to continue to partner with, I know we have a great partner in Literacy Mid-South who gave away 165,000 books last year, making sure that that correlates with the students' interest, so that they'll want those books, and we'll have them touching and reading more books? And so I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yes, ma'am. So I think two things. One is, again, we're looking closely at the types of books that students are checking out from the libraries, so that we can sort of right-size, like, do we have enough of the things that they actually want to read? Secondly, like, not every child checks books out of the library, especially the older that they get. So how can we develop surveys to capture like topics that they're interested in, and then to add to our catalogs based on that? So these are things, you know, certainly that the team is thinking about and trying to figure out the best way to actually deploy. And then, like you said, with some of our great partners, to then make those asks, so that we're using those resources in the best way possible.
Thank you. And I have another follow-up to that. You talked about parents, and parents participating in that, and I want us to be aware of and cognizant and sensitive to the fact that some of our parents have literacy issues themselves. So when we're talking about asking them to assist, what are we, what are we planning to do or thinking about to even assist them in assisting their children? And that's a delicate place and space for adults who have a learning deficit.
Yep. So on that reading topic calendar that I think you have a copy of, there's something on there called the Big Three Questions, and they seem like very simple questions, but they're actually aligned to standards, reading standards. So just by asking a student something like, what was the most important thing that you read, or what was the most interesting thing that you read? That's a very simple question that a parent or caregiver could ask without knowing anything about the book that the child read, but that actually gets the student to talk about the main idea or the central idea behind what they actually read, which is a standards-based question. Did you learn any new, were there any difficult words? Did you learn any new words? Again, so we're talking about building or expanding vocabulary. What would you tell someone else about what you've read? This is pushing them back into the specifics of some of the literature that they've read, creating a dialogue, a conversation between the parent or caregiver and their child, without the parent or caregiver having actually have to read the book themselves. So again, it's creating that conversation where we're talking about the things that we've read, which is building a very specific literacy skill in our students, while also sort of easing the parent or caregiver into that role of someone who's supporting literacy growth at home, just through conversation.
Thank you for that. And I think there might be some partners out there that might be able to help with that. I know that I worked extensively with Memphis Lift, and I know Superintendent is well aware of that organization's and Ms. Carpenter's work. They have something called My Child's Learning Path, or something to that effect, which was built by parents. And with that being built by parents, they can give you some real good guidance on how they can be participatory in their student's education, and understand, no matter where they are in terms of their level. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of all of the strategic partners that we have, to put them in proximity to where we need them to put them in. One last question. I read the Literacy Plan draft, and I know it's a draft, and I wanted to ask about achieve expected outcomes. And I don't know if this is a, and again, I asked for this to be posted, and I think, again, I hope it gets posted, so that we can bring community along with us to give us input around these things. So I'm hoping to see that real soon, posted in Board Docs. So there is a place, T and Ready, it talks about some of the ways you're going to measure expected outcomes. And here it talks about ninth through 12th, I'm assuming, because it's end-of-course assessments in high school, English I, II, Algebra I and II, geometry, integrated math, U.S. history, geography, and biology. And it says that we're going to, our goal is to have 3% minimum annual increase in student achievement. What I don't see is anything around how are we going to assess whether our graduates actually got anything out of our literacy plan? So for instance, we've been focusing a whole lot on the graduation rate, which just means that cohort graduated on time. It does not necessarily mean that they graduated career and/or college-ready. So we know what that means. You get a 21 ACT, you participated in, what is it, two or more early, what is it?
Early post-secondary.
Pro-secondary opportunities, dual enrollment. How do we, how do we hold ourselves accountable as a district that we are actually graduating students who can read?
Yep. So those ACT metrics are kind of the, one of the better, like, global measures of, you know, how did the pipeline actually serve the students from their 12... I would say we're as focused on what we're calling like the leading indicators of success of the plan. And that comes down to, in the classrooms every day, as we're doing walkthroughs, what percentage of the time are we seeing these high-impact strategies and sort of markers of effective curriculum implementation on a daily and weekly basis, knowing that our ultimate report card, you're exactly right, is how many of students that walk across that stage are actually ready to face the world that's waiting for them? So I think that's another thing for us to consider as we think about how we measure our success, but just know that we're kind of balancing our focus on what's happening right now, today, in classrooms. I was in a couple of campuses today, looking for these exact things, and sort of weighting that with some of these more like standardized assessment results, that like the ship has already sailed by the time those results come back.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Murphy.
I appreciate that.
I think this is great. Most of the commissioners have already touched on some of the things that I was going to say, anyway. But we were touring some of the schools, of course, as we normally do, we tour some schools, and some of the Voltex schools that we have toured, and I was asking some questions, and I was saying, well, if they know so much about hair, and they know so much about fixing a car and the mechanics of it, but can they pass the test? And the answer was, no. They can't read. They can't read the test, they don't know how to comprehend. And so I am hands-on, because I tutored high school students this summer, and they couldn't read past the second grade, and they were juniors and seniors. And so they didn't even know what sight words were. And I think that we cripple them when we, when we give them these tablets. And so it's easier for them. So I'm thinking that sometime we need to go to just, being just paper, just scratch, because that's what I taught. I taught, I teach from scratch. And so that was more effective, because it was more repetitive, and I kept saying it over and over. And somehow, we're missing the point. So my question is, how are we going to track the juniors and seniors, and even the Southmoors, to see if they can actually read?
Well, it's a good question, and you touched on a couple of things there. I mean, I think it's about balance, ensuring that all of our reading doesn't happen on a screen, and that also knowing that it can't all just happen on paper either, because we live in a digital world. So students need to be able to work across both platforms. But again, at the end of the day, I want to touch on something else you said. We talk about reading levels. Your reading level varies based on the topic that you're reading about and what your interests are. And you could be on a 10th-grade reading level if you're reading about cars, and on a second-grade reading level if you're reading about something that you don't care about or aren't interested in. And so that's why it's important that we build a broad base of knowledge about many things, so that they are successful across many different topics. But at the end of the day, as I just said, our ultimate report card is going to be on the proficiency rates that come back year on year, and seeing that type of growth, whether it's on T and Ready or ACT. But the magic is in the day-to-day consistency of ensuring that good things are happening in our classrooms, and that students are experiencing, again, a broad array of topics that sort of don't just cater to what they're already interested in, but sort of push their perspective to sort of new areas that they haven't thought about. So it's just going to take some time to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
I definitely appreciate the presentation as well. What I want to see is, is there a way for the district can capture real-time data for the teacher assistant or somebody, can they can help their student in real time? Is there a platform, just like that in the district?
So we do use iReady for some of our purposes like that, you know, multiple times throughout the year, in terms of a universal screener to identify sort of a global reading topic, so we kind of have that fall, winter, and spring. And then as they take sort of additional assessments, as they're working through the various pathways on those platforms that updates. So yes, and we have, we have that sort of capability, and I think their reading, their reading level is kind of displayed sort of throughout the year for reference. But again, I sort of caution against kind of the over-dependence on those reading levels, because it can just fluctuate from one topic to the next, based on what you're, what you're reading about.
And another question is, I'm always, I do like the approach of how we're teaching out our young children, our young students, but I'm also concerned about what they're learning as well, because like the brain, the computer's modeled after the brain. And so it's what's going, what's going on inside of our children's brain is what we need to be concerned about. So I am interested to see like the actual curriculum, and maybe I have to come sit in the classroom as well, just to see, okay, I'll check it out. But maybe I'd come sit in the classroom and just see what is actually being taught to our students, because I love to go back to the basics as well, it says a tagline, but we just need to see what is actually being taught. Are they doing prefixes and suffixes? Are they going back to the phonemic awareness, like you mentioned?
Yes.
But are they, is it taught in a proper way? Because we do have a lot of young teachers that pretty much just came out the system themselves.
Yep.
And they have to re-educate themselves while trying to educate the kindergarten, so it's like everybody is learning at the same time.
Yep. So for example, like Wonders, our elementary reading curriculum, does have a structured phonics program, and what that means is that it's leading teachers and students through a specific pathway of developing those phonics skills and phonemic awareness, so that as they encounter words and books that they're reading, that they can decode and understand them at the same time. And you see, you see probably a more traditional set of topics in the early grades about sort of science and history and arts and culture-related things. I substitute taught in a fifth-grade class last week, and we were comparing writings on 17th and 18th century poets. And then you get into high school today, I was in a classroom, and they were sort of arguing for or against space exploration, kind of based around some of the stuff that's happening with some of the space launches, and private citizens going into space, and having to go into the text, and sort of justify where they thought that was a good thing or a bad thing. And so you sort of see a variety of topics across the grade level, but they do get a bit more sophisticated when you get into older grades.
And one more thing, so how often, at the high level, how often would a district review the statistics and everything? And so we can, you know, catch a student before it gets, before they test and get to the state level, and then we have to deal with the hoopla of a child is a felon.
So I look at them every day. We have a dashboard where we can sort of see the walkthrough information on what's happening in classrooms, and my team sort of looks at that and thinks strategically about where to push in our supports across the district, or different things we need to emphasize with, you know, instructional coaches, for example, or for different topics with other school leaders. But it's something that we have at our disposal, and it's about aligning the right supports to make sure that we're making the biggest impact with the time that we have during the school year.
Vice Chair Love.
Great presentation. Do the teachers have everything they need to be successful?
Can you, you're talking about like the books and resources?
Yes, everything.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to defer to my colleague, Dr. Maples, on kind of any, any holes or gaps that exist with that, but to my knowledge, yes, they have what they need. And I think we want to simplify that by making that their tier-one materials, right? We're not asking them...
Everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McKinney.
We were given the Strategic Partners for Literacy presentation, and I was going through that, and I had a question as we enter budget session. Before and after-school tutoring, are we doing that? We're doing before and after-school tutoring? Are we not doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Then let me, that's, I'm aware that research says that it's much more impactful with, if you have a minimum of two days per week, a minimum of 30 minutes per session for 10 to 12 weeks consistently. What I'm concerned about is the consistency of students coming before and after-school, and is that the most effective use of our resources? Is it a possibility, if we think about, and I want you to think about this as you all come to budget, does this belong, do we need to put more resources in during school sessions so we can really make sure they get that time? Because...
Commissioner McKinney, we have it during the school day also.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I say more. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't have it, I'm saying can we do more? And so that's the question that I'm asking. Can we do more if we push our resources, more resources, the school day?
So the strategy behind our tutoring approach is something that Ms. McLean, our Director of Tutoring, and I talk about often, and I don't want to say too much about it without yielding the microphone to her, but I think the caution there is that everything we do in the school day that's not tier-one, like standards-aligned instruction, takes away from the opportunity for that tier-one instruction. So it's a very delicate balance when we talk about placing more things during the school day, because it takes away from tier-one instructional time.
We'll talk about it during budget.
Thank you, Dr. Miracle. It was not as bad as we, as we thought it would be, would it?
Hey, I could do this all night. This is my thing. Thank you guys for the time.
Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. We're now on to the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda, 9.1, contract renewal, employee onsite medical services.
The recommendation is for the board to approve a one-year extension term. This is in the amount of $2 million to provide onsite medical services to our employees and dependents. This is including, but not limited to, primary care and pharmaceutical services at two established sites with the cost of onsite medical services included, in Flicker Street Clinic, in the amount of $1.6 million, and Hacks Cross Clinic, in the amount of $428,500.
9.2, grant approved.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hewitt Garcia.
How many employees visit the clinic in total each year?
I have to get that information for you.
I mean, the question I'm asking, like, and then are we measuring like health outcomes related to that? I'm just doing the math, and assuming, you know, 13,000 people have our insurance, is it, could we be investing dollars in reducing health insurance premiums? You're talking almost $200, $150 a year for employees, and if we're, if people are utilizing it, great. I just want to make sure...
Good evening.
...we're investing the medical dollars in the right way.
So your question, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, I'm saying, your question is...
How many employees visit the clinics in total each year?
Does the, does the clinic... Does the clinic hold each year or the, I'm sorry?
How many visits in total?
Oh, visits, total. So so far, this, well, as far as last school year, we're at 9,942 visits. So that can be multiple visits per staff member.
Do we know the unique number of individuals?
I can get that for, I don't have it offhand. We normally, with new hire physicals, that's, you know, that's if they decide to come to our clinic, you know, it's, it may be 2,000 to 3,000 to 4,000.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking about the cost per employee and then the overall benefit of, are we better off reducing the cost of healthcare so people can go see the doctor they want?
Well, we're not, we have not been able to capture that. That is, we're collaborating with Cigna, but we, I did ask that question before. We're not able to pinpoint if we're able to reduce costs due because of the clinics, but the clinics help offset them going constantly to the hospital and constantly to the doctor for copays and things like that.
Sure, I think clinics are, I know our county has them as well for their employees. I just think about, I just think about the amount of investment per employee and and if I don't live anywhere near, I don't have transportation, or the hours don't work, I would rather go see my own PCP who has my medical history. But I do understand the function for new employees. It's just, I think it would be helpful to see the number of unique employees and maybe there is...
Okay.
Thank you, Board Member Hugh Garcia. I'll make sure we get the specific, those specific numbers for you. I understood what you were asking.
Can we have your name, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Carmesha Johnson, Clinic and Health Promotions Manager.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney.
This is something that I had the same question, but it's going to be a little more extensive because you have in here that it's employees, new hired students, teachers, and retirees. If we can get that breakdown by employees, new hired students, teachers, and retirees, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I'll take care of it. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
9.2 Grand Approval Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention this school year '24, reducing risk for girls in the juvenile justice system. This is a grant in the amount of $580,000. That will be used over a three-year period.
Commissioner Love.
Is this going to go across the whole district?
No, it will serve the schools, the 85 to 90 female students across GW Carver Academy, Central High School, Westwood High School, Memphis Virtual, Oak Haven High School, Invictus Academy, and Mitchell High School. This is through Project Stand, and this is currently where the programs are offered.
I don't see that.
You all seem to not have the attachments here, so the board office can take care of that. But that, those, that's the schools that the Project Stand is currently in and where these young ladies are currently will be served.
Commissioner O'Teague.
No, we don't have that. So you said these are, they're only in the schools that Project Stand are in? Because my question was going to be, how do we determine which schools get this service?
Right. So this is a Project Stand project, and so this is a grant designed for this work that Project Stand already leads. And currently, this is where the programs are already positioned in those respective schools.
Would there be an opportunity for schools that may need it a little bit more, areas that may need the services more to benefit from that as well?
Sure. I think that's the type of question we ask across the board in general about how do we expand, you know, substantive programs like this. But it requires additional funds that we'd be looking for comparable to grants like this.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney.
Just FYI for my board members, it is attached. It's in several different documents. You have to go into Board Docs.
Thank you. 9.4 Grand Approval Arts 360 Roselle.
9.3.
I apologize. 9.3 Grand Approval Save the Music Grant Craigmont High School.
The recommendation is for the board to accept the Jay Dillit Tech Grant from the Save the Music Foundation. This is for Craigmont High School. This is in the amount of $58,300. This is to expand our instrumental courses. This will allow the purchasing of additional music instruments and equipment to support. I hear some mhm. So this is good. Anytime we can expand the arts, support the instruction of music production, and increase student access to the same.
9.4 Grand Approval Arts 360 Roselle Elementary School.
The recommendation is for the board to also accept the Tennessee Arts Commission Arts 360 Grant. This is for Roselle Elementary. This is in the amount of $25,000. These funds will be used to launch the implementation, which we're excited about, of arts integration enhances learning at the school. This integration is as a specific instructional approach that allows students to both construct and also demonstrate understanding through a variety of art forms. So we look forward to receiving these funds.
Commissioner McKinney.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to say I am very happy that Craigmont got that. They have done a phenomenal job with their band growing from 60 to 120 in a year all over the United States.
Absolutely. Dr. King, they're doing great work over there.
Yes, thank you.
And I want to take a personal privilege. My daughter attends Craigmont. She isn't in the band. But she attends Craigmont.
Well, with new instruments, she will join the band, so.
Maybe we can attract her.
9.5 Purchase Ratification Fine Arts Enhancement.
This is recommendation for the board to approve the ratification for the purchase to Amro Music Stores. This is in the amount of $5.9 million. This purchase is for the district-wide musical instruments. This is what you already approved. We're just now able to make the actual purchase. On August the 27th, the board approved the receipt of federal grant funds through Title IV Fund 12, Project 5011, to support the purchase. So this is based on a cooperative agreement with TIPS, music instruments, sheet music, and repair.
9.6 Approval MOU Literacy Mid-South Ten All Corp. Community Partner Tutoring Program.
Recommendation is for the board to approve a contract renewal request for this year, for the school year. This MOU is for Ten All Corp. Community Partner Tutoring Program. This is in collaboration with Literacy Mid-South. We already have this particular partnership. Thankful they were able to get the expansion, and so an additional 500 students will now receive access to high-dose low-ratio tutoring. So when we talk about what you asked about earlier, is there a way to expand ways like this, partnering with good partners like Literacy Mid-South is how we think about doing the work and expanding it in some of those high-needs areas.
Thank you. 9.7 Contract Approval Ramsey Education.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the contract and the award to the Lampo Group. They're doing business as Ramsey Education. This is in the amount of $140,999 for the purchase of post-secondary instructional supplies and materials. This is needed for our required personal finance classes.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia.
Did we put an RFP out for this service?
An RFP out for this service? So this was a renewal, if I'm not mistaken, for an already existing contract?
Yeah, I know. We had this last year. My question was why Dave Ramsey? I think his particular philosophy of no debt is not realistic when you have no, like, we have a high concentration of generational poverty. It doesn't, I don't know that, it doesn't speak to me. And I think the, just wanting, we have a lot of local partners who do personal finance education. I know one of our board members helps facilitate that. I think I just wanted to, I wanted to teach the skills, but I also wanted to be relevant to the economic reality that is Memphis and many of the homes our kids are in.
I think what I'm hearing is, hey, we'd like to expand and rethink some of the options that we're providing to students.
I mean, I asked this last year, too. This like, just being the only option, I'm sure seeing if there is anything local that meets the standard. I want our students to be able to give the episode credit. I don't know if this is only because Southwest partners in that way.
That is correct. But the opportunity to expand, I will not, I will say that we will go to the table, open it up and have an expanded review. I will share that because we learned literally in the moment from an email from teachers, hey, I no longer have access. And so to get it right now to move us forward was why this was done, but was certainly...
I don't want to hold up the personal finance requirement, but I would like
Absolutely.
options for students.
Consider it done.
Commissioner O'Teague.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to piggyback off of Commissioner Hugh Garcia. I do think, I do know that there are other options out there, and we should definitely explore that so that it is more realistic to what our children are going through daily. And I would definitely want to welcome more options for that. I'm in the financial sector myself, and everyone cannot relate to the Ramsey way of doing things. So I want to make sure we get that, and we get that done as soon as possible because we need to make sure that our kids are meeting the requirements, so.
Commissioner Love.
Do you, Superintendent, do you have any information of why the school chose that program?
Let me yield the floor to Dr. Richmond, who probably has some historical context.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent and board members. The context here is personal finance can be taught at the school level by a certified teacher. With Dave Ramsey with local dual credit, Southwest is asking that we use this particular program. This allows our students to receive dual credit where they receive a half-credit for personal finance, but they also can receive college credit for the three-hour course. So that's why they're taking that. This can also help us with our ready graduate numbers. So you're really kind of killing two birds with one stone? We can use this program for students to satisfy the graduation requirement while in the process receiving dual credit.
So Dr. Richmond, I think what everyone's really curious about, and you may not know the answer to this, any sort of insight into why Southwest chose this particular program with Dave Ramsey? Because I think we're all, you know, just saying it's just not really in tune with like a greater majority of our population.
No, I can't answer as to why Southwest has chosen this, but I know that this is the particular provider that they've said that we would have to go with in regards to dual credit around personal finance.
Thank you. Well, I think we're all
It's the opportunity to have a conversation.
to explore that after this, but we definitely want to make sure we take care of these kids for right now.
That's right.
so they can graduate on time.
I understand. I have a both and here in terms of an understanding.
9.8 Contract Approval Keystone Elementary School Roof Replacement.
Board Member Love. The recommendation is for the board to approve the contract for Medford Roofing in the amount of $1.5 million. This is for the roof replacement at Keystone Elementary. This roof design was approved in January of this year, and it has been vetted and approved by the construction team. And so we are ready to move forward now.
9.9 Contract Extension Treadwell Elementary School and Middle School Auditorium Renovation.
Recommendation is for the board to approve. This is an extension of the contract with AMB Construction for the renovation of the Treadwell Auditorium to April 11th of 2025. This contract amount did not change. It's $938,040. This renovation project was approved by the board in July of this year. We had an original completion date of January 30th, and so now we're seeking the extension because the project could not begin until the funding was allocated, and the funding could not be allocated until we did the budget amendment on August the 27th.
9.10 Contract Renewal Project Build Phase One Roof Replacements for Booker T. Washington High School, Jeter K. A., Grandview Heights Middle School, and the TLA.
Part of our project build projects. This is recommendations for the board to approve the amended contracts to Carroll Roofing for four roof replacements to be completed by December of next year at the schools just named. This total cost is $6.7 million, and the project completion remains the same.
Commissioner Love.
Superintendent.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at Grandview Heights Middle School, is there any more work that needs to be done on the school? Before your time, the roof, the ceiling collapsed in the front office, and they had severe water damage, and it was a mess.
Are you asking, has that been fixed, or is there anything in addition to this roof replacement at this school that will be done?
Yes.
So we can take a look at it. There's a lot of work to be done at just about all of our schools, but we can take a look at what specifically remains. But this roof replacement, to your point about the front office caving in, this is part of that work, that water intrusion. This is where we're leaning.
Thank you. Commissioner Hugh Garcia.
There's a line under the purpose and why. The last two lines that I have a question about says after the contracts were fully executed, a contract alteration made by the vendor was discovered. The alteration has been removed, and recommendations to approve these four SRF-funded projects. So after we, everybody signed, I read that as they tried to change like the terms on record? Like, what happened?
She's asking about the language. The language said contractor's contingency instead of district's contingency, instead of owner's contingency for the district. So when that was discovered, those contracts were returned. And so if counsel would like to speak to it a little bit more, that's the gist of it. But how we got there, he can probably give you some deeper insight.
Yeah, so, and we can talk in detail offline about it. But there was an issue that the vendor had submitted when the contract was submitted, and it was caught by the legal team, and we worked it out and resubmitted it. But I'm happy to walk through the details of that. Yeah, I'm happy to walk through the details of that offline, though.
I think in our RFP process, when we consider doing business with organizations, we should consider like integrity of the that, I'll ask more questions offline. Thank you.
Sure.
9.11 Contract Approval Watkins-Uberall PLLC for Internal School Funds Annual Audit.
The recommendation is for the board to approve a one-year professional services contract to Watkins-Uberall. This is for the internal school funds annual audit. It's in the amount of $102,000. This is to meet the state's requirement of the local Board of Education to conduct annual audits to be made of accounts and records of all schools under our jurisdiction.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Love.
Madam Superintendent, could we please have the audit submitted to us before we vote on it? The audit, when it finished, can we please have it to the board before it is voted on? Last year, we didn't get it till it was voted on. Can we please have it two to three weeks before it is voted on? Can we please have it two to three weeks before it is voted on? So we can have time to look at it.
I'm not sure this is something that you vote on and someone can correct me, counsel or Mr. Langston, but I don't think this is something that
No.
this particular one is not something you vote on. This is the one where we, I get which audit you're talking about, though.
Disregard my comment.
Yes, ma'am. No worries.
9.12 approval Cognia Accreditation Annual Dues.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the payment of $252,900 to Cognia. This is for the annual accreditation dues for the district.
Commissioner McKinney.
I went to look this up and I just want to make sure I understand what benefit it gives to the district. I'm asking the superintendent.
So accreditation process is, is over last several years. It's simply an ask of institutions and systems to verify your vision, your strategies, your level of instruction, just generally that what you're putting out in terms of a product is something that is substantive and of quality for the recipients. And of course, in our case, would be our students. And so to not be accredited would be that we are missing the bar in a grand way in terms of what we're sharing at schools and at our campuses for our students, led by our teachers, but certainly as an overall product. I appreciate that inquiry, though.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Love.
The price is pretty hefty. Can you explain the price?
Well, you know, it's established by Cognia. And, you know, typically the larger we are in instances like this, the more we pay. So the district has been a dues-paying district for quite some time. I'd have to get the number of years, but I believe that this is pretty much the cost. Hasn't shifted a whole lot, but I believe this has been the cost. But I can get some specific numbers and I can take a look at the analysis into how they arrive at because I have not looked at that. So that's a fair question.
Because they're only in two of our schools.
So I think you're thinking about the turnaround. Cognia is for accreditation. What is?
I'm just going to be quiet.
It's okay. No, 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 it's okay. You're just getting clarity. It's okay. And I think you're mixing the two up. This one here is literally just for the district's accreditation so that we maintain our status as an approved body, public institution. Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you for colleagues for illuminating for the listening, viewing audience because it does happen when, you know, insider language and not everyone just automatically assumes that any academic institution with any sort of, you know, merit, you know, wants to be accredited. So I appreciate bringing that, that to our, you know, illumination. It's getting fuzzy. I'm getting kind of, getting kind of tired.
We have to be accredited so we get our funding. That's part of our funding.
All right, ready?
9.13 approval Coca-Cola for all kids bike kindergarten P E Learn to Ride Program.
Excited about this opportunity as well, recommending for the board to approve a donation. This is valued at $36,000 from Coca-Cola for the all kids bike kindergarten P E Learn to Ride Program. This will be for students at Gardenview, Idlewild, Riverwood, and Winchester Elementary Schools. This is a one-time donation.
Hugh Garcia.
Is there any condition from Coca-Cola by the district to have their products in these schools or any of other schools?
Absolutely not.
Okay, cool. I, just on the record. Having a movement-inspired grant by a sugary sweetened beverage company feels, I mean, it is something in the obesity space. There's a lot of global policymaking around it. I'm not crazy about it, but I am crazy about supporting our kids. So we'll get obviously my support, but.
And how would these schools choose?
This particular selection process reminds me how we landed here, Dr. Lester. I know I asked the same question.
Yes, ma'am, you did. And the schools that were selected there were selected by Coca-Cola. So the organization Coca-Cola Consolidated had already previously had a relationship with those schools and they made that selection for us. So we learned about the opportunity that schools were already selected.
If I may add to that, just I can't speak to all of the schools, but I know Idlewild Elementary has had a bike program for some time. I've participated in Bike to School where I drove my bike over to somebody's house in the neighborhood and rode to the school with students. And so it's just there are a lot of children who don't know how to ride a bike. And so this is a big part of helping to get them outdoors and to learn that really vital skill. So I know that was at least a motivating factor for Idlewild.
Commissioner Murphy.
I think this is a great idea. I like it because it helps with obesity and we know we deal with children that have obesity. And then we have a lot of children that do not know how to ride a bike. So I am in agreeance with this because it does give them something to do and they get to use their little energy for something else and that's to ride a bike. So thank you.
Commissioner McKinney.
Thank you, Ms. Lester, for that. Is there any way we can negotiate more schools? If we can help with that?
Right, so I did randomly receive this email and said, hey, reach out, whatever it is we want to say yes. So now we say yes and we go back and say, how do we keep saying yes?
Let's randomly tell them we got some more schools.
That is correct. That is definitely the plan.
We are now on to board items. 10.1 approval resolution.
Do you have 9.13? Is 9.13, 10.13 showing on? We don't have an IEP reimbursement, FFS? All right, so if the board is okay, I'd like to present the item and make sure it's on the agenda. Is that something we can do? I'm not sure why it's not on the agenda, but we do need to move it through if that is okay. I would add, what would this be, 10.14? 9.10 up here, everything is. 9.14, according to what we have before us, would be IEP reimbursement, fee for service, PCG. This is new. Do I need to keep reading or wait for the approval to add it?
I didn't think there were any objections, but I'd just like the materials to be online for anybody who's listening can see the documents and so we can see.
So you can have them, most importantly. Certainly we'll take a look and see what happened. The recommendation, though, here is for the board to approve a contract for two years with an option to renew in 2026 for three additional one-year terms with Public Consulting Group. This is in the amount of $315,000. They manage the electronic documentation system for our therapy and nursing services. So this electronic documentation system links to the state's electronic IEP, facilitating ease and allowing us, of course, to navigate our billing and claims processes with 10care for three managed care organizations. So the district receives Medicaid reimbursements for medically necessary services and those are provided at our schools face-to-face. We also do it virtually via teletherapy. And then this is an average, an annual average reimbursement amount of over $500,000.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia. Commissioner McKinney.
We said this pays for itself by being able to reimburse 10care. So this is, and this is the easiest way to do it in terms of case management and making sure the data gets to the state.
That's correct.
I have more of a general request. One, I think we need to make sure, because there's a bit of confusion about what's been posted and when it gets posted, that we follow our policy and get it posted, stuff posted on Thursday, five days before. Two, I'm looking, when I'm looking at board briefings and I'm looking at the information, it's coming in kind of weird. Sometimes I have goals, sometimes I have strategic priorities, sometimes I have expected outcomes, previous outcomes. So I'd like to suggest that we have our board briefings aligned so that we're clear about what goals is aligned to, we're clearer about the priorities, previous outcomes, if there are any, expected outcomes, and I'd like to add outcome measures. Because what I've seen a lot of the, and I've said this before, in a lot of the expected outcomes, it's very qualitative and subjective and we are not able to, this is again, contracts that are alive, that are spending money. And we need to make sure that it's aligned to our priorities in our budget. And the only way that we keep doing that is if we put it out front, upfront and transparently. And I'd like to add fund, I'll send you an email, send it to the whole board so that everyone can look at it, the suggestion. And it makes sure that we're holding ourselves accountable and the community can understand and follow us, what we're doing. So that's, I just wanted to put that out here because I've got, going through it, I got a little confused going through all the briefings.
We are now on to board items. 10.1 approval resolution reaffirming commitment to the School Seed Foundation. And I will read the resolution. Resolution to recommit relationship with School Seed. Whereas the School Seed Foundation was the brainchild of the M S, M C S Board of Education Commission to create an independent, yet supportive 501(c)(3) that would build donor relations and help schools with private investments on behalf of public school systems. Whereas by February 2009, the foundation became an intermediary with the community, where the community could donate funds for the support of schools. Whereas during the merger and demerger of Memphis City and Shelby County schools, the foundation remained stable and successfully managed the $9 million Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation grant to Memphis City schools for teacher effectiveness. Whereas the School Seed Foundation broadened its work by creating the first ever free supply store for teachers in Shelby County schools in 2017. Whereas in 2019, School Seed orchestrated the provision of classroom supplies valued at approximately $1 million impacting every elementary school in the district. Whereas since 2015, School Seed has dedicated $250,000 to the East TSTEM Aviation Program, reinforcing its commitment to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education. Pivotal areas for job, for future job markets. Whereas more than $6 million has been invested in employee engagement and morale since 2010 with efforts peaking in 2022 when School Seed, in partnership with corporate donors, injected $212,000 into teacher appreciation events. Whereas during the pandemic, School Seed raised over $60,000 to aid 376 families through the S C S Board Cares Initiative, proving its responsiveness and dedication to the community in urgent times. Now therefore be resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education stands in support of the School Seed Foundation's commitment to Memphis Shelby County schools on this 15th day of October 2024, sponsored by Stephanie Love, Board Commissioner, District 3. I would like to sign off on it. Any questions? Commissioner McKissick, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Commissioner Love, just help me understand, like, you know, why we have to recommit. School Seed does amazing work and no debate there. I'm just wondering, is this a part of something that they're requesting or asking for, just to make it formal? Or what's this all about for now?
No, it was me. New board, new superintendent, and I want to form a relationship with the School Seed. New board members, new superintendent, new staff members.
Okay, and that's fine, but like we've been operating, like we've had new boards, you know, several times over. Anytime one person, a new person's appointed or whatever, then that's a new board. So why, I mean, I'm just curious to know why now as opposed to when we had a new board in '22 or when someone was appointed in '21 and so forth.
Because the last time we submitted the resolution was when Patrice Robinson was on the board.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thank you so much. I appreciate that and I absolutely would love to support this.
I would like to sign on, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Otte, Commissioner McKinney.
I'd like to sign on as well. I'd also like to thank them for all the work that they're doing in the community.
I too will sign on to this resolution. I appreciate you being inclusive. It's a new trend that you're setting because we will continue to have new board members and this is a way to ensure that we are all committed and I appreciate that. Always a place to start.
Commissioner Porter.
Yeah, I just want to, I'd like to sign on as well because I'm definitely familiar with the work that School Seed is doing. And Dr. McCaskill over there, they've been doing great work, you know, ever since I've been aware. So, yeah, definitely sign on.
Commissioner Murphy.
I've already signed on, but I'd like to thank School Seed for everything that they've done for us, even with us collaborating with the Fall Academy. I wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you did and they stepped up when we needed them to. And so I wanted to say we appreciate you, the commissioners love you, and thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, School Seed.
Yes, thank you. And a project, if you guys haven't heard about the Giddy Up Equestrian Program, it's amazing. So hear more from that. But I just want to clarify, I think this resolution is great and has, I mean, that has been a while, but if we have a resolution every time, you know, a new board member comes on by whatever reasons, we'll be constantly in the loop of doing resolutions. So we have to honor and also acknowledge the work of the previous bodies that come before us so that, you know, we can't reinvent the wheel every single time, but it does have value. And certainly, you know, our wonderful former school board member who's gone on to so many great things now serving on the TBA, it is good just to make this formal announcement and thank you to Mr. Vince McCaskill and all of his wonderful work.
10.2 resolution for ad hoc committee on strategic partnership initiatives, plans, the charter. Commissioner McKinney.
I'm not sure if this is a, is this a resolution or is it just a request for an ad hoc committee? According to our board committee's policy?
Just a request.
Okay. To give a little historic background, I think it's important that I read this, so bear with me. Preamble in 2015, the M S C S Board adopted Destination 2025 with the goals and objectives to ensure 80% of seniors will be college and career-ready, 90% of students will earn their high school diploma on time, and 100% of college career-ready graduates will enroll in post-secondary opportunities. As we now approach the end of Destination 2025, it is the school board's responsibility per state law, minimum rules and regulations and existing board policy to develop, adopt, and implement a strategic plan that focuses on the board's goals, objectives, and priorities as it relates to student academic growth and achievement. The work of developing a new strategic plan that identifies goals and objectives that focus on student academic growth and achievement will take at least six months. On August 27th, 2024, the board adopted a resolution to expand student and family supports and a joint resolution adopting the More For Memphis Strategic Plan as a guide for public-private cooperation investments to improve economic mobility for children and families in Shelby County to demonstrate its commitment to working collaboratively with external partners, including but not limited to the Memphis City Council, Shelby County Commission, entities associated with More For Memphis Plan, and other partners who can provide diverse, high-quality services that meet the varying needs of our students, ensuring equitable access to resources across our district. Working collaboratively first, however, requires the board to ensure that it has fulfilled its statutory duty to establish the district's goals and objectives for 2026 and beyond and develop and approve a strategic plan for the superintendent to strategically align with external partners where necessary and fiscally prudent. While this strategic planning process is underway, the board could benefit from a focused advisory a focused advisory structure that includes community representation to support alignment with external plans, recommendations, and governance structures without diverting essential committee time away from core district responsibilities. To this end, the school board will establish an ad hoc committee to work with the superintendent, superintendent-designees, and internal and external stakeholders. The committee will ensure alignment with the district's adopted or developing strategic plan and external initiatives, specifically the More For Memphis Plan, as well as other strategic partnerships requiring long-term, defined as more than one year, budgetary commitments. Purpose, the Ad Hoc Committee on Strategic Partnership Initiatives Plans is established to review, evaluate, and make recommendations to the school board, where alignment to the district goals, objectives, strategic plan, resources, and operational plans may exist with strategic initiative plans. The committee will propose recommendations to the board on where and how the district may actively support and integrate the More For Memphis Plan, More For Memphis, and/or any other initiative plans for the benefit of students and the community. The rest of that is the scope of work, membership is set out, and then the roles of responsibilities. So that is what I'm recommending for approval next week.
Just for clarification, we do have a form for making ad hoc committees, don't we? Yeah, and what you do is you adopt that form. Oh, okay, all right, so that's coming. That'll be here next week. Cool.
Commissioner McKissick, Commissioner Hugh Garcia, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for this, and I see it does have value, always wanting to get perspective from various people in the community. I want to speak to specifically, since it's born out of the resolution that the previous board body approved in August regarding More For Memphis. And I think this is something that has been in the works before even I got on the board, More For Memphis, it's been, I guess, six years. And so the baton was placed to me from another board member who's no longer on the board regarding this. And I think in the spirit of communicating what More For Memphis is, there have been many presentations, and I think it'd be beneficial for them to come and present in front of this body what More For Memphis really stands for, before any formal votes are made regarding next steps. Also regarding the strategic plan and having ad hoc committees, you're right, we definitely need to figure out this strategic plan with our superintendent first before we start inviting others to be a part of that process, because that's our responsibility as a board, to figure out where, you know, be the guiding, vision casting for this district and for our children. And so I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable with creating an ad hoc before we've even created the strategic plan. And so, and to look at what that would mean for other community partnerships. But just, and briefly with More For Memphis, that resolution, which along with the city council and the county commission, the beauty of that project was the coming together of so many community groups, and it's the first time, and I've seen in extraordinarily long time where you had so many different groups, private, public, nonprofit, community groups, from the arts to so many, I mean, there's been meetings after meetings after meetings that people have been attending for years, and we finally, and this is something that is modeled off of Jeffrey Canada's Harlem Children's Zone, so that's inspired by it. It's got national funders who are wanting to pour $100 million into Memphis, so that's what More For Memphis, in a nutshell, but I really do believe that this, this board should hear from them directly, because it is big, it is significant. And I think that is our job and responsibility to make sure. And there will be a governance committee, a joint one, in which not only the school board, but city council, county commissioners, and lots of other stakeholders to be that governance, that oversight. But in the short term, I think that we need to get our strategic plan together with the superintendent before we start creating an ad hoc committee to overview and look at things. So those are just my two cents.
Board Member Hugh Garcia.
I have a broader question. The, in your preamble, you talk about fulfilling the strategically aligning external partners. What, it's my understanding that our Partnerships and Development Office was doing that through our performance team and that they were creating a quarterly impact report. We saw a template, I think, before you all joined, where we were going to do quarterly impact reports on any external partnerships that we had. So does this, does this duplicate work, and is this an administrative function that's already happening?
So to answer that question, I think, to Board Member McKissick, I think you, you made my point. There's a lot of things that are a part of the More For Memphis, there are a lot of, and this is based off of not only that resolution that was passed at the last board meeting, where those of the old board members rolled off, there were two resolutions.
No, no, we're, a good solid, four of us are still here.
I said some of the old board members rolled off, so.
I'm not even talking about More For Memphis, it would be like.
Yeah, let me finish, I was responding to her first, and then I'll respond to her.
Well, I'm just thinking that, I understand you, but I, I would love, unfortunately, the superintendent had to step away, it would have been nice to hear from someone from the administration regarding that.
I'm not sure you understand me until I finish explaining what I'm trying to respond to your.
Very well, I understand very well. Thank you.
No, 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 we, we gotta stop.
Okay, I'm through, Chair.
We, we gotta stop this.
Okay. So let me be clear about what this is. Again, there's a lot of things that are being thrown at the district at this point in time in terms of strategic plans and initiatives. One of the things that we haven't done yet, that we're gonna have to do, because we're coming up on the end of a strategic plan we've been doing for our goals, and we've been doing for 10 years, Destination 2025, we have to know what our house looks like before we invite others into it and align with those. So until we know what our house looks like, then it's difficult for us to say we're gonna use someone else's strategic plan, which I don't, and to Board Member McKissick's point, she's absolutely right, there was a lot of work done, there is a lot of things that are going on that we as a whole do not understand. I'm not clear on the More For Memphis Plan, I'm not sure all of us are clear on that. So I think that this committee allows us to bring any initiatives as large as that, that are asking us to align our funds to it, that are asking us to align our work to it, into the ad hoc committee for us to discuss how we can do that. And this is aligned with us doing our work simultaneously on our strategic plan, which by the way, we can't do until we set our goals. So we've got to set our goals so that we know what our strategic plan looks like. Because right now, we're operating off of Destination 2025. 2025 is next year. This is looking at this plan, or the More For Memphis Plan, or anything else that comes in on us, to us, it's looking at 2026 and beyond. So this is an, this is an opportunity for us to do our work, but also begin to understand what these other plans and initiatives are. Because I'm not sure how we align anything if we don't have our work done.
Commissioner Murphy, then Commissioner McKissick.
Can I respond?
Yes.
I think my, all of that makes sense. I think, why is that not the, why would, as a board, if there's a majority of us, say to Superintendent Fagin's, we would like the Partnerships and Development Office, as we create our strategic plan, to lay out how any strategic initiatives that are available or presented or adopted either run opposition to this, complement, there are gaps, what, this feels like an administrative function, or like, in terms of like governance versus administration, and then in terms of the budget process, when you're looking at the recommendations on financial commitments, resource allocation, strategies, our, a full finance team could also make those recommendations. It feels like it's doing administrative work.
If I may respond.
I'm not, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, I don't know too much about More For Memphis, so even to jump in here and say, we have to approve this, I don't want to approve anything that I don't know anything about. I don't know who, who's the founder of it, I don't know who they are, I've never met these people before, so I can't vote on anything that I don't know anything about. So I'm suggesting we kick it back to committee.
It's nothing for us to vote on at this time. I would like, I would also like for it to go back to get more clarification for those that don't understand, but I'll listen to the rest of my colleagues. Commissioner McKinney, then Commissioner McKissick.
I think it was McKissick then McKinney, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Right ahead. No, I defer to my colleague.
Thank you. So to be clear, the ad hoc committee is designed to do that, to give us time. More For Memphis is an extensive, expansive, 600-page document. To ask them to come next week to explain to us what it is, is not feasible. So this committee would allow us to simultaneously get in, get, learn about what it is as we're doing our work, so that we can, because in the resolution, if you all, I don't know if you looked at the resolution that was passed on August 27, it talks about commitments around stopgap measures for budget, budgetary stopgap measures for fiscal year '25. These are all things that we need to take time to do that cannot necessarily be done in the committees that we have currently, and, and I'm thinking that there are other initiatives that might come along that we may need to make budgetary decisions around. So my, my concern is that this is an opportunity for us to use this as a way to learn about More For Memphis, and any other, any other initiatives that we have, as we are doing our work around setting goals.
I appreciate that, but I don't want to learn, I want to learn before time, I don't want to learn after.
Thank you, and I absolutely agree that, you know, a presentation needs to be made, and not just one presentation, but this is something also, just years and years of work. And I know that you're, you know, new to the game in terms of being on the board a month now, but just to respect the work of previous bodies before you, before it predated me. And you talk about the strategic program, the, our strategy, excuse me, we definitely need to work on that as a board, and I just don't see bringing in outside entities to tell us about how to work on the strategic plan, then that's our job, that's what we were elected to do, and so we need to focus on that. And this, you know, next steps, first of all, if you have any questions, I'm sure More For Memphis, they may be listening, I don't know, but welcome to meet with you, but I think a formal presentation, like we heard from UEA tonight, we got a great presentation from Dr. Meyer Cole, we do have to juggle a lot of things at once for a district of this size, but next steps, and I have, I will tell you, I've been immersed in this, I have nothing in the game, I'm not making any money off of this, but just simply going to a ton of meetings over the years, and just learning about it, and it is, but at some point, you know, you have to, that's, we are owned, you know, by virtue, ad hoc committee for this. And so what's happening next, in this next step, is that the governance from all three bodies, in terms of county commission, city council, there will be representatives from the board on this governance committee to make sure there's oversight, there's a lot of money involved in this. And so, without question, I agree with my colleagues here that we definitely need to have a close, but I just feel uncomfortable bringing on ad hoc committee, not just for More For Memphis, but we've got to get our house in order in terms of our strategic plan, and that work is coming up. And so, and then we can look at, you know, what's next, but to my colleague, Board Member Hugh Garcia, that, you know, that's why we have really capable people that are working here and, you know, going on eight o'clock at night, who are tasked with being a lot of the oversight that's presented to us as a board, as a body. So that's my final remark for this evening, and I appreciate you listening, I do hear you and understand you, Commissioner McKinney, and I understand the value of what you're trying to suggest and recommend, but I just think this is a bit putting the cart before the horse. Thank you.
To Commissioner Murphy's point, I will reach out and get them to come to our committee meeting, and give us a synopsis of what, what they're planning and what they want to do. We'll start there, if that's okay with the board.
So I've asked for this to be on the board meeting agenda, so I'd, I'd like to have the option to decide where it goes before we do that. In meaning going to the, to the board meeting agenda without recommendation. It can go to the board meeting. Commissioner Love.
Natalie, you were involved in the district charter compact, is this like that? Is this like that? An ad hoc committee was formed for the district charter compact?
Yes, it was, it was formed for the district charter policy.
Yeah.
And so we had, you're asking me the composition?
Yeah.
So the composition was of different charter school leaders, different administrators, and different community members coming in and helping us form that, that policy.
But, I'm just trying to get some rationale. The district charter compact was a policy. It included various community members and employees and board members.
It did, it did. I think what, what you're asking me is that district policy, policy is the work of the board, and one of the things that we did with that ad hoc committee is we invited various stakeholders to partake in helping us to build that policy. Not unlike this ad hoc committee, where we are asking various stakeholders to come in and help us determine how we may, you know, some of this stuff may become a part of our goals and strategic priorities. So this is the one, this is, this is where we invited relevant stakeholders in, provided them with information, and then they helped us form recommendations, and those recommendations were then brought to the board. The board would then make a decision, made the decision about what they chose to do. And just one thing with the governance, and I think this is be important for us, part of us learning in this particular ad hoc committee. Board Member McKissick talks about a governance committee that will be formed of representatives from various elected bodies. And without understand, one of the things we need to do is to understand that, and again, this ad hoc committee would allow More For Memphis, and again, any other initiatives, like as large as this, that are involving all of the elected bodies, it would allow us to understand within the, in that committee, so that we could then hear recommendations that would then come to the full body to make decisions, that would then also help whoever's sitting on the governance committee of this More For Memphis would know our direction as well, as what we're asking them to do with respect to the More For Memphis Plan. So that is, again, to make sure that everyone understands, this does not require a strategic plan before we do it, this is actually in light of making sure, as we do that work, we are thinking about these initiatives and these other strategic initiatives and plans that are being presented to us, so that we can possibly align when we're making our goals and objectives. So that is what that is.
Commissioner McKissick, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, can we just move forward, and we can address it next week at the business meeting.
All hearts and minds clear, be in no other business.
I said my piece.
I'm sorry, 10.3, approve, uh-uh, your resolution, your, your funding, your school board, school funding allocations, please have them turned in by Friday.
Friday?
Friday. Please have them turned in. Please have them turned in by Friday. All of your allocations for, that you want to be on the agenda, please turn them in by Friday.
Oh, okay. Oh, Maz already, no, Maz already in.
Bein' no other business, this meeting is adjourned.